Thank you. Evening, everyone. I am calling to order the September tenth, hard to believe it's already almost the middle of September, meeting of the Albemarle County Planning Commission. And I'll open by saying the opportunities for public to access and participate in the hybrid meeting are posted in the Albemarle County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Albemarle calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters for which comments from the public will be received. So with that, I will establish a quorum. Do you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Thank you.
Awesome. Full house. With that, we'll move on to comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Are there any comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda? All right, seeing none and assuming they're not online?
None online either, no.
Perfect. And Kevin will not be one of those people. I'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there, is there any interest in pulling the approval of the draft minutes from August twenty seventh from the agenda? If not, can I hear a motion?
No, moved.
Second.
We, any discussion? We have the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, items requesting deferral to a new date. That is ZMA two oh two three dash seventeen slash SP two oh two three dash twenty, Chestnut Grove Manufactured Home Park Community. I believe the applicant has requested deferral to a date specific of December seven, sorry, tenth, two oh two four. We will need to make a motion to do so. Hear a motion?
Motion to defer ZMA two oh two three zero 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 one seven forward slash SP two oh two three zero 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 twenty, Chestnut Grove Manufactured Home Park Community deferred to December tenth, two oh two four.
Second.
Any discussion? We have the roll, please?
Right. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we are rolling. With that, we'll move on to the public hearings and we'll begin with SP two oh two three dash fifteen, Knight Berkshire Mixed Use. Could we have the staff report, please?
Great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sid Shof. I'm a senior planner with the planning division of Albemarle County's Community Development Department. Tonight, I'll be giving staff's presentation for SP two oh two four zero 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 one five Knight Berkshire Mixed Use. This is a special use permit request to allow fifteen multifamily residential dwelling units in the C one commercial zoning district. The subject property is approximately one point zero five acres and located north of the city of Charlottesville at six one five Woodbrook Drive. It is zoned C one commercial and the comprehensive plan designates it as urban density residential. The adjacent parcel to the southwest is Agner Hurt Elementary School. To the north are multifamily residential units and to the northeast and southeast, they're all zoned C one commercial. Currently on the site is a one-story building that has a footprint of approximately six thousand five hundred square feet. The existing building is currently used as a dental office with a rental office space in the rear. The first proposal is SP two oh two four zero zero one five, which is a special use permit to allow fifteen multifamily residential dwelling units in the C one commercial district. The other two proposals are two special exception requests that the commission is not required to make a recommendation on. However, the commission can provide comments on the special exceptions, which will be included in the transmittal summary to the board. I'm happy to discuss the two special exceptions at the end of my presentation if the commission is interested. The first is a special exception request to reduce the fifteen-foot step-back requirement to zero feet. And the second is the request to allow disturbance in the required twenty-foot use buffer. Here's a proposed concept plan if the special use permit and the special exceptions were to be approved by the board. The applicant's proposing for an approximately seven thousand eight hundred eighty square foot footprint building that is four stories. The first floor would be office slash commercial use, while the top three floors would contain the fifteen residential units. The applicant's proposing for thirty-seven shared parking spaces on the site, as well as a proposed stormwater facility. Lastly, shown in red, there is a proposed future connection to Agner Hurt Elementary School Illustrated. However, after discussions with Albemarle County Public School staff, they've requested for this connection to be removed, since there'd be a future connection to a future multifamily site two parcels north. The special use permit application was reviewed under the factors for consideration as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that the proposed special use permit will not be detrimental to adjacent parcels, will not change the character of the nearby area, will continue to be in harmony with the C one commercial zoning district, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There is one condition drafted for this application, and in sum, it requires the development to be in general accord with the provided conceptual plan. Staff identified three essential elements, which includes the location of the building envelope, location of the parking areas, and then lastly, the building height. In sum, there are three positive aspects. The first is that it's consistent with the review criteria for special use permits contained in the zoning ordinance. The second is that the use is consistent with the place's twenty-nine master plan. And lastly, it provides an additional commercial use and residential units for people who live and work in the area. There were no concerns from staff. Staff recommends approval with the conditions as recommended in the staff report and to update the concept plan to remove the proposed future connection to Agner Hurt Elementary School. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Start us off. Nope, all you.
Line. Okay. Yeah, so just, just one question. So in terms of being accorded with the plan, I know that this is adding residential units to, to this otherwise commercial property. There's, there's bottom, the bottom commercial units, those would have to, whatever happens, we'd have to stay commercial, correct?
That is correct. The zoning, this is not a rezoning. This is a special use permit to allow fifteen residential units on the site. So since it will remain C one commercial, it will, it will remain commercial by right uses.
Okay.
More? Since you invited the question, I'm curious about the setbacks and where the zero-foot setback need is.
Yeah, so there are two special exception requests. The first one is to reduce the fifteen-foot step-back requirement to zero feet. So section eighteen dash four point two zero requires for each story that begins above forty feet in height or for each story above the third story, whichever is less, the minimum step back shall be fifteen feet. And so the applicant's requesting for a four-story building, which would, would, which would require the fifteen-foot step back. And so the applicant's requesting for it to be reduced to zero feet. As far as the justification for it, the applicant can provide more detail on that. The second special exception is to allow disturbance in the required twenty-foot use buffer for commercial districts. And they cited three reasons for that. The first is allowing the existing entrance to remain. The second is to allow for a connection to an existing stormwater pipe. And third is for that future pedestrian connection to Agner Hurt Elementary School, which is irrelevant to this because it's being removed. And so for the first part of this, the disturbance is for the existing entrance to remain. Shown in yellow there, the existing entrance is actually already encroaching, and so it's not in compliance. And so the second part of that is that they are proposing for the disturbance would be to grade and extend the existing curb line to allow the existing wood retaining wall to remain. And the purpose of this is to allow a larger building footprint and additional parking area. And the applicant can provide more detail there. And then the second part of that is the second disturbance is in the rear twenty-foot use buffer, and that is to allow a stormpipe connection to an existing facility on the site. And then with that, there are a conditions for this one, and that is just basically general accord. And then the two essential elements are the locations of where those two disturbances would be.
Okay. Any others, Commissioner Moore?
No, just to clarify. So the setback is not for the building itself, even the building envelope, it's for the other things that are, that are sort of there.
Yeah, that's correct. The setback, are you referring to the, the use buffer setback or the, the step-back requirement?
Uh, oh, well, you, I guess, step back, oh, so step back would be
The building itself.
Four stories that normally would require more setback than what it's, or step back.
Yes, the step back is for the, the building itself above four feet.
Yep, thanks.
Or four stories, I'm sorry.
Right. Mr. Revan?
Can we go back to the, the, the exception, the proposed exception for the water, for sewage or for runoff? So is, can you just, I couldn't, I didn't understand, and maybe, and I'm sure you'll, you'll defer if, if that. It's a special exception question to allow new storm connection to an existing stormpipe. So who does the storm, the existing stormpipe belong to today?
I'm unsure at this moment. I think the applicant could provide more detail there.
The applicant can hear that, Ben. That's a question. Who does, who does the existing stormpipe belong to today? Thank, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I do have one question. I think I know the answer, but I'll ask it anyway. So within a C one, there's allowable uses. Does that change any when you put housing or residential in conjunction with it, like on top? Or are all those existing C one uses that are allowable, still allowable?
Indeed, they are, unless for some reason we would restrict them further.
Okay.
Mr. Firehawk, Mr. Carazana? No, I don't have any questions either. Great, with that, thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant's presentation. And you probably know the process, but just state your name and for the record, and also you have ten minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Moon. I'm with Line and Grade Civil Engineering, and I'm joined here by Dr. Jay Knight this evening. He's the owner of this parcel. And excuse me if I sound a little hoarse, got some allergies, but I think I sound worse than I am. So here for a special use permit, as Sid has walked us through. I think he's done a good job explaining the context of the site. One more thing I'd like to point out, this is an existing zoning map, and it's a little outdated. The parcel just across the street was recently rezoned to allow for, I mean, you guys know, but just to refresh your memory, an increased density of thirty-four dwelling units per acre. So this is surrounded by residential uses to the northeast and then commercial to the south and east. And Agner Hurt, obviously, to the west. This is an aerial image of the existing site. So it's a one-story, approximately sixty-five hundred square foot building. There are twenty-three parking spaces in front. And the proposed, or the existing dentist operations are largely going to remain the same in the proposed condition. So we propose, even with the new building, the dentist operation will still be there, operating eight to five, Monday through Thursday, so they are closed on Fridays. And I give you all this background information because it becomes relevant for the parking agreement. But, so eight employees roughly per shift, about three patients per hour on site. And in the proposed condition, the existing parking in front will remain, the building will be demolished and relocated slightly southeast. Though generally, the layout of the site remains the same. The, the building footprint is slightly increased to just under eight thousand square feet and will be four stories maximum. And just to mention a couple of questions that were brought up, I think we've, we've established the step back and setback difference, even though they're annoyingly close in the way they sound. I did want to point out, this building is set back from the road further than we would typically see in a commercial setting. But this is due to, there, there's an existing water main and sewer main that run through this parking lot and easements to ACSA through that, so we're not proposing to relocate those. And then as for this existing stormpipe through the back of the site, the, I can't remember the date of the original plans, but the parcel like north and I think south of this were all permitted together. And there's a storm pond on the parcel just north of this, and this is the outlet from that. And then it crosses the southern property, and there's another like detention pipe. So this was all put in a long time ago. I can't remember the exact date, but that's why that's existing there. Um, let's see. Okay, proposed increase in parking spaces on site, total of thirty-seven. And the proposed site operations, as I mentioned, the dentist operation will remain largely the same as it is now, which works nicely with the proposed residences, as they'll mostly be gone during the day while the dentist's office is open. So we can reduce the overall parking on the site. We're, we're requesting a shared parking agreement to be able to reduce parking by up to thirty-five percent. And we don't have architecture for the building yet, but Jay is planning on a mix of types of units from like one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, and we'll just have to see what fits in the building. And we are proposing that twenty percent be affordable over ten units, so consistent with the comprehensive plan recommendations. There is a projected increase in traffic in the morning of about eight trips to or from the site. And the special exceptions, I think we've mostly covered, but maybe just on the step back, here's a picture from the street of where the building is located. So it'll be roughly that same distance from the road, and the step back is usually meant for the pedestrian. So they don't just feel like there's this huge wall enclosing on them. But because this is set back further from the road, we didn't feel like that would be an issue, so we're requesting the reduction to, to zero feet step back. So this is my last slide. We believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan as the, the, this is a urban density residential zone with recommended density of between six and thirty-four units per acre. We're requesting fifteen. We're proposing affordable housing, so if, if all fifteen units are built, that means three units are to be affordable. And it fits with the neighboring properties, commercial and residential, so we don't foresee this being a negative impact on neighbors. Thank you very much, and I'm available for questions, as is Dr. Jay, so.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions? We'll start with Commissioner Firehawk.
Yeah, I just have a brief question. So obviously, you're adding residential use to a commercial building. Is there anywhere for the residents to like come outside and sit on a bench, or is it literally just the parking lot and the building?
That's a great question. There's, it's not, there's proposed, this area in the, in the rear is still turf or just open area. So we don't have the details of like an amenity space yet. But it won't be completely asphalt. And so there's opportunity for definitely on the site. And I have shown like a big possibly bio retention or something out there, but you know, this space could be used for, for various things.
Well, sure, if you make a beautiful bio retention basin, you could have some benches around it.
Yeah.
And they'll just think they're sitting by a garden, so. All right, yeah, just, just the idea that you could escape and get, get outside on a nice day. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Carazana? I have no questions.
No questions.
Murray?
Yeah, I mean, when you look from space at this, this part of the Albemarle County, there's just so much pavement everywhere. And, and so as we're increasing density here, you know, certainly there's gonna be a lot more parking here, you're gonna have a big building here. And I know you'll be meeting your state requirements in terms of like addressing stormwater volume and so forth. But is there anything that you are thinking about doing or willing to do in terms of stormwater quality? Be it green roofs or permeable paving, or as was previously mentioned, a biofilter to, to address the quality of stormwater as opposed to just the quantity?
That's a great question. Thank you. I think, I think permeable pavers could work well on this site for the new back portion of the site or biofilter. I think the applicant's interested in something like that. It just, we haven't, we haven't actually detailed it yet. So I'm showing, I'm showing possible underground detention or biofilter. It also kind of depends, if there's good soil in this area, then like a biofilter might be a really great option because we can actually infiltrate into the ground instead of just like piping it somewhere else. But we'll definitely consider those as we work through the site plan.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Great. Commissioner Revan?
Here, so if I, I believe, if I, let me, I'm not gonna suppose anything. What are the units? Are the units rental or are they for sale?
These are rental units.
And so they're, and they are gonna be a variety of one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
Yeah, that's it. As I said, we don't have architecture yet. We're planning on engaging with an architect after this is approved. So I don't have the exact breakdown, but that's definitely the intention, is that there will be a variety available.
I'll, I'll ask staff on this, and if it's above, if it's four floors and less stairs, if it's five floors, elevator?
I would need to check in with the building code staff for that.
I'm imagining there's no elevator.
I'm not sure. An archi, I mean, I would think for four stories.
Hoping so. I mean, otherwise, it's not accessible.
I'll, I'll, we put it, we, okay.
But that, I mean, it would definitely meet building code, so.
So there will be an elevator?
There will be an architect who lets us know what's required. But I would think with four stories, that an elevator would be required, but I cannot say.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Moore?
Commissioner Murray actually asked a similar question to what I was, just, I know stormwater runoff has become kind of an issue downstream, as it were, as we cross twenty-nine and hit some of those, those waterways that feed kind of past Woodbrook and so on. And permeable, permeable pavers in the back would be a nice touch. I, I was, yeah, just asking about, curious about, so the twenty percent affordable units at sixty percent AMI is, is part of the deal? Or the long toll. I think that's the first one that we've had, and so I just wanted to kind of take a moment to, you know, bust out the kazoo's or something, that we actually have one, so. No, I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
Thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions. One, stormwater, keep going back to that, but it kind of depends on the, or dictates the size of the bio retention, too. Have you, are, when you design the stormwater and tie into the existing pipe, is that existing pipe sized, you know, for the, to take the extra flow? Have you gotten to that point yet?
We have not. I think I've just made these, and I wish I could read. I think it's a twenty-four inch, but it, it handles a, the overflow from an existing pond, stormwater pond up above, so I would assume it's sized for like a large storm overflow. But we have not gotten into the details of that yet, but it is within an easement. So I guess if we had to increase the size downstream.
Drop a manhole and then run a new pipe?
Yeah, we have an easement to do so. But this all, it goes into a detention pipe downstream. So if, as long as we're decreasing the flows, it should all, it should be sized appropriately.
So you're in, well, yeah, I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but you're having to size your stormwater to accommodate the front parking as well, even though that was existing?
No, so actually, and I wish I had the overview of the whole, how it all fits together, but this, there's an existing pipe in the front parking lot that actually feeds into this whole system in the back. It wraps around. So initially, before we got the survey, I wasn't aware that this pipe was here.
Yeah.
And we were proposing connecting, like in an unfortunate location through the managed slopes here to this existing pipe.
I see.
But it's all part of the same network, and there is existing stormwater infrastructure for the front parking.
I got you. Okay. And that's probably, I guess, the reason of the uncertainty around the stormwater is why you have war with biofilter, right? So you.
Correct. I just don't want to like promise a biofilter and then be like, oh, this doesn't.
Well, you gotta do quantity and quality, right?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may, maybe you could put a green roof on top, and then you, people could sit up there and.
I could, I could have a long conversation about green roofs. I, they, I think in, you only get such a small credit that the cost of them, you still probably would have to purchase nutrient credits and spend a bunch of money on the structural, you know, anyways, I, I really, yeah, I would love to one day.
Roof will last two to three times longer, though.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely.
I know. Go ahead. I'm not trying to get you to promise me a green roof. I'm just playing around with some other way to get some green features into your development.
I, I will mention, it's not a lot of money, but there is some money locally to precaution share for green roofs.
Okay.
Through the Stormwater Conservation District, that it's one of the few cases where it can apply to new construction. So it's just gonna offset like, you know, several thousand dollars, and maybe, I think it'd go like ten thousand. You have to look at the programs, see what it is, but it's something.
Okay. Yeah, no, I hadn't heard of that, so thank you.
The Agner Hurt, the connection there, you guys are okay not putting that connection in? I know that was a.
Yeah, that was a comment from staff early on in the, in the, what's it called, the pre-application meeting, that, that we should provide one. So we showed it, but then I guess after conversations with the public schools, they, we removed.
Great, and then this is a kind of, I guess, a, just a general policy question. I'm curious, the parking spaces are designed for the uses that you've got on the site, right? The number of spaces, and you said that it's great because the residents will be gone when the dentist's office is open. And I'm just wondering if that's still true, like, you know, we used to assume that, right? Because not everybody, no one worked from home, but now with all the working from home, I wonder if that's ratios change.
Sorry to cut you off.
That's right.
I had this thought when I was writing the shared parking analysis. And I mean, I will admit, the statistics I found are just a few like here and there. But I think the highest rate that I found of people who work from home in two oh two four full-time or whatever was, it was around like thirty percent or something that, that matched very nicely actually with this thirty-five percent reduction. So I felt comfortable in proposing this, like assuming that seventy percent of, you know, the residents would be gone during the day or something like that. And just the, I think the required space for the dental clinic was, was a little higher than based on what, what Jay has said, his staff. It, you know, eight people and maybe three patients per hour, so even if we have like a safety factor on that, it's a little bit high. So I think, long-winded way of saying, we feel comfortable with the numbers, the number of parking spaces shown.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions?
No, I, I did look it up, though. It's thirty thousand incentive for green roofs.
Okay.
Not a lot, but something.
What was the program you said again?
It's the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program. It's through, through local stormwater conservation district, the Thomas Jefferson Stormwater Conservation District, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be able to find that, exactly. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much. All right, are there any comments from the public attending this evening? Don't see any, any online? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion. Anybody like to kick us off? Yes, ma'am.
I'll just say that I really like the use of shared parking. When I was on the Charlottesville Planning Commission, we did that a lot, and it's a great idea. And then the other part is I like adding residential to the site because I figure everyone living there won't have any excuse for not getting their teeth in good shape. And a stair, a stairway down to the dentist's office. But yeah, I really, it's, it's, it's an underutilized site, and we have a lot of sort of airspace in Albemarle County that's, you know, going unused. So I, I really like this proposal.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just come alongside that. I mean, we don't get a lot of mixed use, particularly in a meaningful way, so twenty-five percent is actually commercial development. So I think we, we just need to see more of that.
Uh, of development. So I, I think we, we just need to see more of that and its densification. So um, I think all that are, are real positives. I will say just for, so my colleagues, um, you know, at UVA, we've had. Significant experience with, with pavers and um, permeable paver, pavers. And unfortunately, they don't work all that well in parking areas because of oil. So they start to saturate in them and then they lock them and they clog them and they're not going to maintain them. It's that we don't maintain them. So it's really hard to maintain. So it's, it, they're actually, they're good for walking areas and patios and. But for, you know, any kind of, of driving areas where cars are gonna be, oil's gonna be spilling on them and other. Um, liquids, it's just, it's, it's not very effective, unfortunately.
Commissioner Claiborne?
I think conceptually it's a really uh, good use of space as my colleagues have shared. I would just encourage, as the design continues to mature, just think about the livability. Um, right now, to be honest, I doesn't feel like a place I would want to live. It's just a sea of asphalt around. So getting that architect on board early is important. So I'm just gonna put that plug out there. Uh, but just livability as you continue to mature the design. So people want to live there. So.
Commissioner Murray?
And this is exactly the sort of thing I'd like to see more of. Um, you know, commercial and residential, you know, stacked on top of each other like this. You know, I already made my comments about, you know, love to see, you know, better, you know, commitment to stormwater treatment, quality on, on site. But, but yeah, I'd, I'd love to see more, more like this. I'd love to see even taller than this.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bivens?
Thank you, Chair. That's where I was gonna go. We know that the new project that was mentioned actually sits on a hill. And so it's going to have some height to it. I believe the project next to it also, because of the topography, has some height to it. And so I would have been open to having some additional height on it, since there has to be an elevator. And what the heck. And, and I think then that would have been able to sort of do some interesting things with the form. Either you could have some balconies, not balconies, is that what they're called? Yeah, balconies, so that people could have outside space or outside space in the unit. If it was, huh? Still good. Yeah, they could, but that's not what I saw. I saw a square. And so I'm just sort of suggesting if it was higher, then we would also has to have the setback, the step back, which would be helpful. So I just think that's an area that could take some, some height densification as, and so I'm fine with this, but I always would like to see.
Thanks. Commissioner Moore?
Uh, similar positive comments, uh, from what I've heard from my colleagues. I think the um, it's a good use. Uh, I, I also uh, just kind of drove up there the other day and it's like, oh yeah, right. This is an easy walk to the grocery. It's an easy walk to the school. Uh, it's an easy walk to the bus stop. Uh, it's a really prime location for, for some dense housing. And it's right next to some existing and soon to be dense housing. So I think it makes a lot of sense.
Great. Thank you. My only additional comment is kind of coming on, on board with the density comment, which is. You know, if you have a site like this and you can go high enough and tuck the parking underneath and make the economics work with the commercial. You don't rely as much on the paved parking around it and frees up some green, green space. It could. Um, so with that, I think we are close to having a motion, but I'll just mention the two special exception requests. Are there any, do, do any of the commissioners take exception to any of the special exceptions?
Take exception to the exceptions? Uh, I do not. I think they make a lot of sense given the, the location.
Are you okay with them?
Yeah, I'm fine with them. We don't actually, I believe, have to vote on.
We don't. Just wanted to get that in before.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, like, sometimes we, we do make a recommendation on a special exception, even though we're not required to. If we think that it needs some more input, but I think these are really straightforward.
I agree. So. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-four zero 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 fifteen, night Berchley mixed use with the conditions stated in the staff report. And to update the concept plan to remove the proposed future connection to Agner Hurt Elementary School.
Second. Any discussion? All right. Can we have the roll, please?
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Karazana.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right. With that, we will move on to the next public hearing item, which is. Bear with me. SP twenty twenty-four dash nine, Our Lady of Peace. I'll ask for the staff report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Cameron Langel and I'm a principal planner with the Planning Division of Community Development. And tonight I will be giving you the staff report on this special use permit. My computer just taking a moment to boot up here, but I will have the presentation on our screens shortly. Okay, well, as I mentioned, I'm Cameron Langel. Uh, tonight I'll be giving you the staff recommendation and presentation on SP twenty twenty-four dash oh nine. Which is the Our Lady of Peace Assisted Living Facility Special Use Permit Amendment. So to begin, I just want to talk about the existing conditions. Basically, uh, this SP affects two properties. I'm going to use my laser pointer for a moment. Those properties are highlighted in yellow on this screen. One of them measures six point nine five acres. And that, that's this one right here. And it's currently occupied by Our Lady of Peace Assisted Living Facility. Um, it's got an entrance directly off of Hillsdale Drive. You can call that the east or the south side. It's got uh, several areas of parking within the site. And in the building where all the assisted living units are located has several wings that you can see here. Um, this SP does affect the abutting property, which measures twelve point five one acres. And that is the location of the Church of the Incarnation Catholic Church. It too has a building that you can see and an entrance off Hillsdale Drive and there's parking as well. It's a little difficult from this image, but there is a vehicular interconnection back here that connects these two sites together. Um, the church does have another driveway up off Hillsdale Drive right there. One thing to note, I don't have the zoning district shown, but both properties are zoned planned unit development. They're part of the branchlands planned unit development. And almost every parcel that you can see on this image also shares that zoning district because they're all part of branchlands. Um, in terms of surrounding properties, this one that's on the north or west side of Hillsdale Drive. Is the Jefferson Area Board for the Aging um, Offices. This is a courtyard by Marriott Hotel. This building, it was formerly the Big Lots Retail Store. I'm not sure if they're still open, but um, that's where that was located. Down here, this structure has got some offices. And then these buildings and parcels that you see, they host a variety of residential uses and other assisted living facilities. I mentioned them by name in the staff report, but again, they're all within the branchlands pud. When you go north, um, this neighborhood up here is outside of Branchlands. It's Cobalt Ridge. It's zoned R fifteen residential and as you can see, it's developed with attached residential multifamily uses. Fashion Square Mall is located to the north. It's sort of separated by this vegetated buffer, but you can see the parking lot and building there. Um, to the south and east of these two properties is the Chapel Hills subdivision. These are uh, zoned R one residential. They're just large lot, single family detached. Um, uh, residential uses. So to just to get into what this request is, the Our Lady of Peace uh, facility does have an existing special use permit. And what they're proposing to do is amend that to construct a new wing onto the existing building. This is the new wing right here. Uh, this immediately abuts the parking area of the church. So it's sort of the, the southwest corner that are border between the two properties. Um, there would be fifty-four total new units that exist within Our Lady of Peace if this SP is to be approved. The application narrative and staff report break down, you know, the different types of care that would be allocated to those fifty-four units. But in total, um, there's a hundred and sixty-three beds or units at Our Lady of Peace right now. And this approval would bring it up to two hundred and seventeen. The um, new wing of the building, i- it basically is going to be three stories. The habitable space itself is two stories and it's built above one level of parking. Basically a parking garage that you drive in at grade. Um, on this image right here, you can see this, this travelway is meant to represent that it's going into that first level of parking. Under the building. Some other aspects of what would be changing from the existing conditions include basically a reconfiguration. Of just that parking area on the church parcel. They just have to shift things a little bit, get it a little bit more at right angle. So that it can meet, you know, engineering design standards as well as our zoning ordinance regulations. This is where the uh, intraparlial connection currently exists. I can show you a different image later if we get to the question, answer period and you need to see it. But right now, it's, the way to describe it is it's slightly jagged or serpentine. And with this reconfiguration, it would just be a lot more straight, which meets our code requirements much better. Um, one thing to note is that in order to build the new wing of Our Lady of Peace. There would have to be what we call a boundary line adjustment changed that would occur between the two parcels, just to take some acreage from the church property. And give it to the Our Lady of Peace parcel. And so. This is page five of Attachment Three. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that in the previous slide. That was page four of Attachment Three. And Attachment Three is the concept plan that our applicant has prepared. I think this image is easier to see, but the existing parcel boundary is right here. And the proposed parcel boundary would now be here. And it would connect right there. Sorry if I, my laser pointer didn't stay directly on it. But I just wanted to raise that because it, it, they've demonstrated to us that they'd be able to meet building setbacks, parking setbacks and everything else. That both parcels need to exist based on their current uses. Um, so with that, the, there are no unfavorable factors that we've identified with this proposal. And the favorable factors include that is consistent with all the review criteria that we are required to evaluate for within the zoning ordinance. I just want to reiterate that one of those criteria is consistency with the comprehensive plan recommendations. This proposal is consistent with the future land use recommendations contained in the Places twenty-nine master plan, which is the development area where it's located. And furthermore, this is one of the other attachments in the staff report. We went ahead and evaluated this request. Against the uh, comprehensive plan neighborhood model principles, which are the design guidelines that staff is required to look at. With any sort of special use permit or rezoning application. And we find that it's fully consistent with, with all twelve of those principles. We are recommending approval of this. We have suggested one condition. Uh, and that it is uh, any development that occurs following the special use permit approval would be consistent with the key elements noted. By that bulleted list at the bottom of your screen, uh, as shown on the concept plan. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I have many slides of different pages from the concept plan. And if, if you want to look at the zoning map or the places twenty-nine future land use map, I have those as well. But I would be glad to take questions from the commission now.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions? Commissioner Moore?
I don't have any questions this time.
All right. Commissioner Bivens?
Yes, please. So, so if I'm, if I understand that the ownership on both parcels is by the Diocese of Richmond. So that it's really the owner shifting, shifting the boundary on the property that, that's owned by them.
I believe that's correct. The tax records that I'm able to see show that the church is owned by the Richmond Diocese, the Catholic Church. Um, the Our Lady of Peace property is owned by Our Lady of Peace Incorporated, which has a mailing address in Roanoke. But I did notice one thing, it is a tax exempt property. So I, I, I think yes, but.
Some, someplace down the line, but I just, I think, I just wanted to make clear that we're talking about an entity moving it, moving a boundary. That's owned, that on property that's owned by itself.
That's what I hope.
If the, if they can talk to us about that. And, and then the other question that I had, if the boundary adjustment does occur, does parking. Does the number of parking spaces at the, at the religious entity, does that change at all?
No, and I think they would have enough parking as is to basically have that building in use occupy that site still.
And then the, my other question is, was the parking that's being designated under, I know one of my, many of my colleagues like that approach. Well, my question is, do they even have to have that additional parking? Or is that just simply, could they have a three-story building with the top two story? Being, being related to healthcare and the bottom story being whatever else they might need administratively.
My understanding, and this is based off some of my review with my colleagues in the, the zoning division, that, that, there, there is quite a bit of parking onsite as is.
That's, 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 that's driving my question.
With the amount or the number of maximum uh, beds that could be built, there would need to be some additional parking built. On the Our Lady of Peace site. So I, yes.
Okay. And then my other question is, you know, we do this. So if we look at our census that just came out a couple of years ago, the fastest growing population in our community is over fifty-five. And with that comes all the sort of the kinds of services which are there. And so I'm hoping that there was some discussion. If you need more capacity, could you start thinking about it now? So you don't have to come back in five years? And so just to, to create a footprint that allows you to grow, allows you to provide more facility without having to go through this process. In the not-too-distant future.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Moore? Sorry, Murray.
Did it again.
That's nothing. Okay.
I just got confirmation. I believe my colleague provided the answer. I just wanted for the record. So that side of the property uh, is actually quite steep. And I'm assuming all that is managed slopes and, and then the stormwater, there's just. Can you talk a little bit about the stormwater and, and how that's being treated? Cause again, there's quite a bit of.
So the.
Topography there.
There are areas of both managed and preserved steep slopes on both properties. But any of the grading or construction activity that would need to occur for that new wing to be built would only affect managed slopes. All the preserved slopes are on the far southern and eastern property boundaries of both. They're not going to be affected by this. Um, the concept plan actually has a couple of different options, or it just shows options for stormwater management that could take place. You know, at the site development review stage. And I think the, the property that actually has the, the big pond right now, next to the church, is that what you were referring to?
It seems like there was a.
If I'm not mistaken.
Stormwater, but.
Yeah, that is a stormwater uh, property. And that was established when all of Branchlands was built. It, I think it takes water from several different parcels with, yeah, within Branchlands. Um, there may be an option that they could have some of their stormwater go to that property. But that would be something we'd have to look at at the site plan review stage.
I would just note that that property, I, I believe I'm correct, this, this is publicly owned. It's owned by the county. And in fact, I think the Parks Department is investigating and potentially using it as a pocket, pocket park as well. So.
Oh, but that, that's stormwater pond?
Mm-hmm. When you saw the image Cameron had earlier with the property boundaries, it's sort of that triangle shape between Hillsdale and the church. That's the parcel I'm referring to.
Thank you.
I do have questions. No, you're good. All right. Uh, with that, I will open the public hearing and ask for, I'm sorry, did you have other? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Um, just so, you know, about the pond. Um, so since um, you know, the county is, is looking at that. I, I think there's a lot of opportunities, like right now from what I can tell, having, it's been a while since I've driven past it. But it's just like your standard sort of stormwater detention pond right now without like a lot of anything. Um, so I, I hope the county staff is engaged, you know, with people like Rep. Gladley and other stormwater people to think about like integrating some native plants. And other things in that area. It could actually make it a, something that actually be way more attractive. And actually, you know, have some quality treatment of stormwater. I see some shing you've had there.
From what I know, that is actively ongoing right now. You know, Parks is evaluating turning it into that pocket park. But yeah, we've got a native plants list, uh, that, that would probably be part of the programming that would take place if, if it was truly turned into a park. And Mike, I don't know if you have anything to add on that, but.
All right. I, I did have, did have one question about setbacks. Bear with me here. So I can, I, it was helpful to trace the line. I see the, the line. Remind me what the setbacks are for buildings? And parking along the property boundary.
So in this case, um, we use this, there's a 10 foot setback. This is a side and then a rear here.
Okay.
And there's, there's different dash lines. It's a little bit difficult to see. And if I mentioned a parking setback earlier, that might've been a mistake because I don't think HUD actually has a parking setback unless it's specifically established. And I'm not aware of one that pertains to this part of Branchlands. But, um, again, I've looked at this with zoning and that's something we would have noted during the staff review and it hasn't been a concern so far.
Okay. And it's not a, it's not a concern to have the travel way that close to the building edge? That's okay. Crosses the property boundary. Nothing, no issues there. Okay. It's just really interesting. Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, any more questions? Cool. All right. We'll open with the public hearing and ask for the applicant's presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Lori Schweller, attorney with Williams Mullen, representing the applicant, Our Lady of Peace. Uh, I'd like to introduce the rest of the audience to you. Here we have the executive director of Our Lady of Peace, Rachel Lindberg. John Albert, who is the representative for this project.
Do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do.
Okay, cause that, this isn't yours, right?
That's not mine.
Okay.
Thanks. You know, Jonathan Showalter with Timmons Group. And we have Jake Jones. Jake Jones is the architect with Jones and Jones Architects.
Thank you.
So hopefully we'll be able to cover all your questions. Thank you. So Our Lady of Peace is proposing a special use permit amendment. This new wing will allow it to bring more assisted living and more skilled nursing home. This is a, this is a senior residential community. There's independent living, assisted living, long-term nursing. It, it's a multifaceted senior living today. This is the location you've seen. You can see, um, the location of the proposed wing where the star is. I think Mr. Langel's covered that extremely well. This is, uh, showing you the two parcels and the zoning. This is urban density residential is designated in the comprehensive plan. This map shows you the actual Branchlands PUD approval from the eighties and Aqua. So you can see how those parcels fit into that. This is the existing building in the center of the screen and the church building to the left. So you can see how they interrelate today. And just to orient you a little bit, this is the existing entrance, um, one of two entrances off Hillsdale into Our Lady of Peace. And this is the entrance to the church off, um, Hillsdale with Our Lady of Peace to the left and the church to the right. And this access shows you, um, what it looks like when you're heading back toward the site where that stand of trees is. There is not a sidewalk in this area and we're proposing a new sidewalk. And this is the area where the proposed, um, uh, addition would be in this parking lot tree area. These trees are not in good condition. In fact, since this photo was taken, those, uh, one of them has fallen down according to John Albert. So those are going to be removed, put the new addition. And this is, um, the existing conditions here. You can see the areas of steep slopes between, um, the, the church property and the existing building. And so the new addition will allow Our Lady of Peace to provide, um, an additional 20 new assisted living memory care units and 34 new private skilled nursing home beds with ADA bathrooms. So this is a really great addition for Albemarle County. They have obtained a certificate of public need and the licenses for these new skilled nursing homes were shifted from Southwest Virginia to Albemarle County. This would be a real benefit to the county. And to have these as private rooms, um, is, is just, uh, an excellent opportunity, um, provided by this SUP amendment. The, um, as, as Mr. Langel noted, the total units in the entire facility will increase to 217. The new wing will include a parking garage. There's a pedestrian passage, um, that goes under, through the garage here. So, um, I'll show you a little bit better. This is the new sidewalk. So the existing sidewalk on Hillsdale gets a little bit of a jut right here and then ends. And so the project will add a brand new sidewalk all the way down. You'll sit, you'll have this, uh, pedestrian crossing across where vehicular entrance accesses the parking garage here. You'll have a nice crosswalk over to the church property here for pedestrians. And then the, the sidewalk continues on through the building, um, to the existing building. Uh, and this is, and you know, the existing natural area provides a nice view through the windows of the building and, and that will remain as much as possible. This gives you a little bit more detail about the pedestrian access routes. And, um, we're adding a new bike rack in the garage and bike rack in the front of the building. Just to show you architects, uh, how this garage sits on the property, it will be, um, below grade so that it's not visible from Hillsdale Drive and then the two, uh, two new floors above that. There won't be any significant traffic impact with the addition of these units. So there's, there are no proposed, uh, changes to the roadways. There are lots of transit stops in this area. Fortunately, um, we're showing five here that, um, are helpful to the employees and the visitors to Our Lady of Peace. Here we can see in green, the preserve steep slopes, which as Cameron noted, will not be impacted at all by, uh, the addition. The yellow indicates the managed deep slopes and those will be, um, you know, managed in accordance with, um, county design standards. We'll talk about stormwater management, um, in the next couple of slides, but of course we'll be designed in accordance with WPO, V S N P and state requirements. And I mentioned the trees that will be, uh, removed on the hillside between the church and Our Lady of Peace. And then of course we plantings would be done pursuant to landscape regulations. This is this, uh, our stormwater management information for you. This was, um, something that was brought up generally in the community meeting. So I have a little bit of detail and Jonathan can fill you in on any more, uh, detail you may need. So, um, the one year storm, uh, will be reduced and initial calculations show that reduction will be 20 to 50%. Tenure storm must be held to pre-construction conditions and those methods are going to be determined during site planning. Not intended to include that dry, dry pond that you mentioned on the county property right here. Interestingly, this project's, uh, drainage contributes less than 2% of, um, the inflow into the Branchlands Pond, which you can see here. And I mentioned that because a question was raised during the community meeting. And so just wanted you to have that information. Mr. Galloway thought we ought to make that clear. So you're seeing in, uh, in dotted line, the drainage area to the Branchlands Pond, 91.38 acres. And of that, the Our Lady of Peace project, um, contributes less than, uh, 2% of that. And, and this is the Branchlands Pond I, I mentioned here. Here's that again, uh, with an aerial overlay. I wanted to, uh, talk with you a little bit about, uh, Our Lady of Peace in conjunction with the county did a stream restoration project about five years ago. And, uh, there was significant erosion happening near the retaining wall next to the, um, next to the, uh, current memory care wing. Uh, you can see in these photos, which are 2018, pre-restoration. In 2019, post-restoration, that was significantly mitigated. And today, these are current photographs. Um, that area continues to be stabilized. So we're happy about that and, uh, don't, don't anticipate, uh, contributing any silt downstream. Just mentioned quickly, special exceptions are being requested. Those are for modifications to the 1988 ZMA, um, to revise the acreage and the uses of areas A and B within the Branchlands PUD. So area A is Our Lady of Peace, area B is the church. And because of that roughly one acre boundary line adjustment, the size and the use on each of those two parcels changes. So that, that's the gist of the special exceptions that are being requested. As Cameron noted, we think this project is very much consistent with the neighborhood model principles. The PUD has, um, a wide variety of uses from commercial to all types of residential. The neighborhood center, Fashion Square Mall and shops along Branchlands are within white, walking and biking distance. There's a wide variety of, of housing types and affordability in this area, not only all the senior housing types, but there are townhomes and apartments in the area. Certainly interconnected streets and transportation networks. There are two entrances to the project from Hillsdale. There's interconnection with the church. Existing pedestrian access with the church will remain. New sidewalk from Hillsdale to the parking garage and through to the existing building. There are existing pedestrian and bike facilities along Hillsdale and many transit stops as we showed. And a new bike rack is proposed. This development is interior to the parcel. I'm sorry, uh, we'll stop there.
You can finish the thought if you.
Okay. Uh, well, the, the existing Our Lady of Peace has lots of recreational areas, outdoor and indoor. So we're not proposing anything new. The, the courtyard area created by enclosing existing building with a new, with the new wing is really a, a steep slope with, with, with the trees, a natural area. That's not intended to be a new recreational area. Maximum height, uh, would be approximately 46 acres because the second, uh, no, no new story starts above 40 feet. There's no step back requirement. So I, I'll just stop there and, um, this is the plan and be happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Starbuss, Firehawk.
Could, thank you. Could you just confirm that the ownership of both parcels is the same? That was a little confusing.
Technically no, but yes, in essence.
Can you give me a better answer?
As Cameron pointed out, the, the subject parcel is owned by Our Lady of Peace, but, um, it's an affiliate of, of the, um, Diocese of Richmond, Catholic Diocese of Richmond.
So after the, okay, so after the boundary line adjustment, that land will become part of the other parcel.
Oh, yes.
And then they can decide whether they want to sell that for a dollar between the entities or donate it or whatever they're doing.
They are very much in cooperation on this project.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Karzai.
So, can you pull up the, um, the plan that showed the, the drainage again? Yeah, actually, can you go back to those retaining walls? So can you point to where those are on the site plan? I was a little confused where that creek, is that the creek that flows to? The pond?
Let's see.
Is that that blue creek that?
Get myself oriented.
Is that what that is?
Can you see my cursor? Yeah.
So that creek is, is that basically that blue line that goes?
Yes.
That's the one we're looking at with the retaining wall?
Yes.
I wasn't quite sure whether. So that's all within property? And you, so you're not anticipating? You're far enough away from that stream that there's no issues with the buffer, it seems like. Okay, I just wanted clarification, but I wasn't quite sure whether, whether.
That's right, that, to give you some more context. So, so we're.
Yeah, you're, you're just, you're, you're quite a bit, uh, what is that west of there?
So, so we're looking at this area and then the new addition would be over here.
Yeah, I just, I, I didn't quite see where that, where the creek was and where the walls. But I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you for the question.
Can I just actually bounce off that one? So the, it looks like the sanitary line, the potential location sewer connection would be on the building side of that stream.
That's a Jonathan question.
No new stream crossings, I assume.
I think I have one at the end, actually. Is that?
Um, yes. I'm, okay, I believe it is over there to the right.
Please step up and state your name.
Yeah.
Uh, Jonathan Showalter at Timmons Group.
Thanks. So on this image, you see the note on the far right? I think that says potential location of sewer connection. So that's on the building side of the stream, right? There's no stream crossing. That's.
That is correct. On this image, the stream is over here to the right.
Got it. Okay. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Clayburn?
Can you leave that slide there? I'm curious if you could, after you parked your car, could you show me how you would access the new proposed wing after you parked? So walk me through the circulation?
So you will drive in here and then there's a, a elevator, elevator in here and that. So you can access the new wing or you can walk through here to the existing building. This is a gazebo here.
And so can a, an ambulance then just thinking, uh, someone passes in their room, God forbid. The ambulance will just kind of pull in and then you would be able to access the ambulance from inside the, the parking garage.
It's back there. The morgue is back in the back.
Mr. Jones is shaking his head, yes. Nodding his head, yeah. Within the garage.
Okay.
Yes.
Just making sure we're not, you know, having deceased people transported all throughout creation, right, to get to a, a vehicle. Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Murray.
Yes, um, so the, um, and as, one of the topics that was brought up for incentive adding, um, the parking garage is the amount of parking that'll be on the site? And will you be over the amount of parking that you need at that point or, or just add it?
A little over, I think. And, um, I can show you here. This is on the plan. This is just a cut and paste from the plan to show, um, that both the church and Our Lady of Peace would continue to have quite sufficient parking. You can see that the church requires quite a lot of parking. It's a pretty large church. Um, and, but they will continue to have enough and same with Our Lady of Peace.
So, um, have you considered removing of the, in the existing surface parking once you put that, that other structure there? And, and I'll mention that there is, once again, second time admission incentive programs, but there is an incentive program actually to remove impervious surface in Albemarle County. So you could potentially, um, get some funding to remove that, that unneeded parking.
There hasn't been any discussion about removing parking. It, it, uh, I don't know if there's anything to add about that.
I mean, if you look, once again, if, if you look from space at, at that whole area of it's, it's just one big sea of, of asphalt. You know, in that area of the county and a lot of it is unused parking. So, you know, particularly, you know, Fashion Square Mall, which is not too far away. That area is just a big ocean of, of, of asphalt. And so anything we can do to reduce the amount of asphalt, particularly if it's not likely to be fully utilized, uh, would be an asset, I see. In fact, even if there's, if, um, if we need to get an exception from the county, if the county is requiring you to have more parking than you really need, I, I think that that's, that's something that, that I would be in support of it as well.
Well, I, I would, I would add that, um, you know, for, for the Our Lady of Peace new addition, we only need 30 spaces and, um, and so we're adding, we're adding what we need. 38 spaces i- in the parking garage. And those spaces, you know, are valuable to seniors because they can, they and their guests can drive into the parking lot and access the building easily and not have to walk so far from surface parking, uh, into the building. So it's, I think it's particularly warranted in this case, um, to.
into the building. So it's, I think it's particularly warranted in this case to provide it beneath the building. It it just seems an important amenity in this case. Most of the parking you see is actually on the church property. You know, they've got two hundred nineteen spaces. But that's not at issue today.
Right. All right, Mr. Murray, anything else? Mr. Vivens?
Thank you, Chair. My only, as as I said earlier on, my only piece is the hope that if you need more capacity, which I given the the demographics of our region, that you can accommodate it here. You have some room for growth here. And so that you're not sort of in a position where you have to come back in ten years to ask for another forty spaces when the site could certainly handle a a larger addition.
It could.
Yeah, it could handle a lot of addition. And I'll speak to my my colleague to my my left there. While it may appear, you know, this is that whole issue about religious institutions having having a need for parking at X period and for a few times a day. And I can tell you from having been over here during one of those X times a day, there there are times when it's really hard to find a parking space over here because it is just, it is just filled with families and 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 sorted cars. And so while it may be one of those off-peak things, I I don't necessarily know that it goes. When the church is in session, I don't think that it's it's that the space has gone wanting. And I'm hoping with the purchase and the new PPP, P three partnership with Home Depot, that we'll actually see some significant, a significant sort of development over at Fashion Square because that's been something that people have been trying to think about. Is that a place that we could actually create create new community? And with the county engaging with that, the new owner, the majority owner of that space, I think we might see something there also. And so I, not to try and sort of to sort of skirt around it. I I think, given that they're putting the the spaces under the building, which I'd like for them not to have to do that, but given that that's what they've designed, I I think this this this, they they're being sensitive to to what they need and which is separate from what the churches need, what the church needs.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
I do not have any questions that others haven't already asked.
All right, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Are there, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this topic? All right, is there anyone online?
No, there's not.
Okay, great. Well, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Who would like to kick us off? Anybody?
I think it's a great project. I'm glad they're parking under the building and I think they're going to need a lot more capacity. I mean, I might need to move in there in fifteen years.
Thanks, Commissioner Carazana. Yeah, anybody? Anyone on this end, closing thoughts, comments?
I'll I'll just say that I'm really glad to see too, some people are putting in parking garages. It's a much better use of space than than surface parking. I I'm glad to hear, you know, the assessment that that all that parking will probably be used, so that that's good. And and it's true. I mean, this is an aging population. It's something that's needed, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivens, anybody? More?
I I would just, you know, there's a, there's a, so so while the applicant spoke to the Branchlands Pond, which is a green space that if you want to walk to it, it might, at our age, you might get, well, at your age, not at my age. You might get looked a little stink-eyed at because it is in a in an aging community. But it's actually very nicely done. And so that that stream that comes alongside the property line has actually been, because of the rehabilitation, it actually works very nicely. But remembering that at the southwest corner of the church, there is a a pond. Across the street, down from Food Lion, there are two ponds. And then at the corner, which I think is the place that the county is spending a great deal of, a great deal of effort trying to mitigate flooding. Because when it floods, it's troublesome there, I'll just say that. So in that area there, there actually are four pond, or four water and water things to manage. Features, thank you, water features to manage the runoff coming down that hill. Now, the county is going to spend a bit more at the intersection, if you'll remember where we 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 worked on something for Via when they moved to the old senior center. That pond there is that that water feature there is the one which the city is trying to figure out how to manage. That's that it doesn't spill into that intersection there. But there's, there, there are a number of of intentional water features there to try and manage runoff down that hill, down the Hillsdale Hill. Plus, I imagine, once we straighten that road out and go through and go through Fashion Square Mall, that that will also change that, won't it?
Yes, sir.
So I'm just one little thing I will mention, when I was trying to pull up the the Water Protection Ordinance Buffer, I I saw that that the streams in the those areas were not covered with an ordinance buffer. And so it did kind of look to me like a perennial stream, just, you know, on the images there. And so just as a note to staff, maybe you want to go back and add those buffers in there.
All right, thanks, Commissioner Vivens, anything? Commissioner Moore?
Uh, seems like it meets a need and it certainly is consistent with the plan that we've got and the area that we've got. It's just sort of adding on to what's already there.
Great, thanks. The only thing I'll add is it's nice to see that connection to Hillsdale Drive, that pedestrian connection to.
Yeah, that too.
Great. Anybody interested in making a motion? And this is a reminder, I think we do also have special exception requests, which were mentioned for the acreage. I assume there's no comments on that, but, okay. All right, anybody interested in making a motion?
I will move to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty four, bunch of zeros, nine, Our Lady of Peace Amendment with conditions as stated in the staff report.
Second.
Any further discussion? Or more having a busy night with his motions?
Both my, both my district.
Great.
Miss Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Carazana?
Hi.
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Vivens?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. Appreciate it. All right, with that, we will move on to committee reports. Are there any updates from commissioners on committees? No, 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 no. Commissioner Vivens or Commissioner Moore, any updates on committees?
I don't have any.
I do. I had a CAC, and see, I remember. I don't know which one it is, but I had a CAC listening. And I'm going to chair, suggest something for us. I'm going to suggest that we hear from that we hear from Christie Shiflett, who is the Chief Operating Officer of the county. Because the county has a strategic plan execution, analysis and reporting. And and many of us have wondered, what are the ways in which things are being measured and will be measured? And she spoke particularly to the whole idea that the county is not only collecting data and is also setting strategic goals, but it's also figuring out what are the ways in which those goals are going to be measured, in which ways those are going to be successful. And AC forty four now may not be ready yet, but AC forty four was coming under that whole, that 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 whole sort of rubric of 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 strategic planning. And so I think while we may not not be specific to AC forty four, I think hearing from her and how the county's approach that will help to perhaps give us a deeper breath. That in fact, there's things which are being put in place to answer a number of the questions that we've had about, well, how are you going to measure that? And how are we going to know that you did the right thing? But there is a mechanism within the county to do that.
Did Ms. Shiflett present to you CAC? Is that what you wrote down?
She presented to our CAC.
Nice, nice.
And if she comes here, perhaps she'll give you your own. She'll give you her own. The other thing that, the other presentation we had was from Stacy Pethia. And and we've heard from her before, but we've heard from her as things sort of were kind of gelling together. What was interesting to me last night was to hear how much they gelled together. And how much there is and how much there is a a a sort of multifaceted housing approach by the county. Particularly for those individuals who are who are either unhoused or who are who are at income levels that it's challenging for them to find housing. So I would suggest that it would be helpful for us to hear that so that we are aware of sort of in a more robust manner of what's going on in the county and how it's and how it's been and how it's come together.
Better ideas. Thank you. We can talk about that offline. Awesome, thank you. Moving on to the review of the Board of Supervisors meeting from September fourth. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There were four items that went to the board on the fourth. The first was the Wireless CTA returned to the board. They had actually asked staff to go back and look at some of the potential issues related to biodiversity, to mountaintop protection, historic protection. There was a lengthy debate about it at the board. At the end of the day, the the draft that had been put before them moved forward as was proposed, so.
I I I didn't understand it. At the end of the day, they then did what?
The, I guess, the the board had a lengthy, you know.
I remember what they wanted you all to go look at.
The exclusion areas were the thing, right?
Yeah, I remember that. And then I read the minutes and then then what happened?
So they basically, the, after the I was not actually there at that meeting. I apologize, I was out of town. But my understanding was that there was a lengthy discussion and that the, at the end of the day, some of the changes were kind of like asked about or considered did not make the, did not make it into the new ordinance. It was, it was, it was adopted as it was previously proposed.
Thank you.
So I had a question about that, too. I know one of the question, one of the the comments I had made to the Board of Supervisors was about, you know, you had the biodiversity, you had the large forest blocks designated as sort of suggested as avoidance area areas. I know that those did not include what we call in the Natural Heritage Committee are special sites. Some of those sites just happen to be in the those areas, but but many were not. And I don't know, was there any talk of including special sites within those avoidance areas where the avoidance areas proposed to be included? I meant to go back and listen to that recording, too, but.
I think that the discussion was primarily geared towards trying to like bring in biodiversity areas. And I don't know if it was so much of a selection of of a subset of that.
So for those who aren't aware, so one of the things, there's, there's the large landscape scale of these are large forest blocks. But there are also areas in Amherst County where there have been identified natural communities of importance where you have state critically imperiled species. The state ranks species from S one, you know, S three. So S one being critically imperiled, S two being threatened and S three. And so we have several areas in the county that are, that that are, that include S one species. And we even have some areas in the county that include what are called G one habitats. So the the G scales are actually global scales. So we have some areas that are actually globally rare habitats as recognized by by DCR. And so I think it's important to take, you know, that data into account. Some of those sites can be much smaller and they don't necessarily fall in the farce block. Because our historically, when colonization, before colonization, our landscape was actually a mosaic of grasslands, woodlands and other kinds of habitats. So while protection of forests is important, it's not the only kind of habitat that's important to protect. And so it's an inclusion of those other other habitats of grasslands and wetlands, other systems, I think is important when we consider things like avoidance areas. And and we do have data about. Thanks.
Great, that was one of four?
Yes, sir. The other two were items that you all had previously seen. One was nineteen twenty eight Scottsville Road. That was the one southern part of town wedged between about twenty south and Avon. It was a six unit townhouse complex. I know that it was one of the questions that sort of come up about the neighborhood a little bit farther than north, had the you know, the older rock walls and steps. And I think they're going to try and continue to work with them. I think maybe I would just a little follow up, but that one passed as well by the board. The other one was on Rial Road there, the Community Christian Academy, the modular buildings that also moved through fairly uneventfully. And then the final thing was a family, the Roach family in Cozay on two forty, it was a request to to be adding them to the connect to public water and sewer, or actually sewer, I think they already have public water and and that property is right next to the Beaver Hill Mobile Home Park. That's there. And so it's a smaller house right next to that. That was also granted capacity to join the public sewer system.
The house was?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Uh, let me just ask a question. Is that on four A, is that, is four A connected to that property? Our agenda item four A, which was, which was deferred this evening?
Oh, no, that that manufactured mobile home park is actually proposed.
Oh, it has not happened?
Yeah, and that's closer down Skylar area.
Oh, the sky, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Segue into AC forty four update? I'm sorry?
All right, go ahead. I I wasn't sure what mobile home were talking.
Mr. Vivens was asking about Chestnut Grove that was on the agenda.
Yeah, that's.
Which is a different, the the one I was referencing, one I was referencing was near Cozay.
Okay.
The one that was on the agenda is close.
Chestnut Grove is sort of pretty close. It's just Chestnut Ridge Road kind of connects to the James River Road. And if you were driving between like, say, Howardsville and Scottsville.
Got it.
It would be maybe a third of the way from Howardsville or two thirds away from.
Okay, I know where that, I know where that is.
Yeah.
It's down there, okay.
It's down on the, yeah, down there. It's a lot of narrow, windy.
It is.
Country roads.
Beautiful country roads.
Yes.
Thanks. AC forty four update?
Yes, sir. So we are in the thick of it, staff level, and we are getting ready to roll out a fair amount of stuff in October. We'll be going to the, back to the public with some stuff, bringing a lot of development area land use policies to your wall for your review. And hopefully over the next several months, you'll be seeing several chapters, topic chapters, dealing with both the policy of land use and rural area land use, transportation in the rural development areas. This is where we're going to start. We'll work towards some environmental chapters after that. So again, we'll we'll be multiple meetings with you over the next several months to go through those topic areas. Very excited about that.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So in that schedule, I mean, obviously, we haven't, we have, I haven't seen the schedule. I know it's been changed and all that. Will there be adequate time for when the planning commission reviews something for that review to be captured and presented to the Board of Supervisors as part of any review that they would do? We've had problems in the past with things going forward, basically in exactly the same format we got them, or even where the board did not have the minutes from the planning commission to consider as they did their review.
Our intent is to keep them closely paired. The minutes question, it will be something we'll have to make sure we can manage.
Yeah, because it's, you know, we get it and we have a lot of comments. And then and then it's, thank you. And then they, the board gets the exact same document, so it's not reflecting our ideas. It's just additional thought for them. It just seems like.
It's our attached.
Yeah, well, there was, my supervisor complained to me about having to do one of the reviews without the benefits of the minutes of the planning commission for the comp plan specifically.
I appreciate that concern specifically. I think more globally speaking, yeah, our our intent is going to be like bringing both bodies a very similar package, if not the same package, and to explain to the board some of the discussion that happened at the planning commission on on major topics. And we should be provided in the minutes.
I think we could turn around fairly quick.
Yeah, you, the only reason it wouldn't have been there is if we missed a meeting like we did a couple of months or that we'll do this month as well.
Right.
So that these minutes won't be approved until October. But usually I'm, we do it every two weeks. That's pretty quick. Let me know the date.
I could, yeah.
I I appreciate, appreciate the concern.
The past so much to just make sure that our deliberations actually go to the board and they have them as part of theirs. I I mean, if in a perfect world, I would prefer that that some changes could be made and then take to the board that incorporate our changes or ideas.
I, I appreciate that.
I mean, we've been at this for years now, so.
And part of that's to try and help maybe somewhat expeditions through it as we possibly can.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, sorry, nope, to, to just add on to that. I mean, I, I understand the time constraints and so forth. And, and I think there's been sometimes when it's done, been done better than it has other times. I mean, I think at least um, as opposed to just a raw presentation of the minutes, at least a staff analysis that says, you know, these are some really key things that the planning commission brought forward that we think might be good additions. Um, so that, so that, so that it's really, um, there's some analysis that happens between.
Yes, something.
Yeah, something that happens between we, when we discuss it and when it goes to the board supervisors. I think that would be really helpful. And, and there's been times when that's occurred. And, and I think that that's been greatly appreciated by
Yes.
by everyone.
Before your tenure back here, we, we did talk to staff about that and some attempt was made to try to do what you're saying. So I, I kind of don't want us to slide back to where it's like, here's fifty pages of minutes you can comb through and see what was relevant to your discussion and, and take notes on the side and try to then conclude. But if, if there were some kind of summary, like here's some key points from the planning commission, please consider those as part of your deliberation, even if you give them the same packet, at least something has been digested for the board to kind of, you know, staff are the professional planners, so.
Like an executive summary, sounds.
Yeah, and, and you know, like here's some key points to keep in mind kind of thing. I mean, the minutes are wonderful, but the minutes are also really long.
Yeah, I think in fact, we can even structure our conversation about around that. So that at the end of the discussion, we can say, what are the what are the key takeaways?
Right.
And.
I like that.
Actually even ask staff to list what their key takeaways are. And then those will get documented and then they'll go to the.
Right, because we do, we do have a far ranging conversation.
Yeah, no.
Very comprehensive conversations about the conversation.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Barnes, I had a question about that as well. If you go to the website, it says, where are we in the process? On the AC forty-four process, and it says under fall, winter, twenty twenty-four, AC forty-four team drafts comp plan document, finalizes draft plan recommendations, AC forty-four team publishes draft comp plan document. And I'm not, I'm not trying to wordsmith or nitpick here. The next one says winter, spring, twenty twenty-five, planning commission and board work sessions on overall plan implementation and key issues. So if I'm the public and, and we know that we're going to have work sessions during the fall and winter of twenty twenty-four, it seems like that should also be on the website. So that others are aware that it's going to be before the planning commission.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'll have, well, we'll get staff and we'll double check that.
Awesome. Thanks. Um, and then just echo the needing enough time to review the materials is, um, to give you guys all the credit for doing that work. Uh, okay. Anything else on AC forty-four that we can?
Appreciate the input. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Any new business?
So I, I have an eye, I mean, so here, here is this thing that's been sort of, this may be big business. And I know that the council's going to look at me sort of oddly here. I just, I wanted to just put it out there. I want to put it out there. So, you know, everything we do is exception based. We're the, we're the, we're the board of exceptions. And we don't do any, except for the comp plan, which I'll reserve comment on that right now, whether or not that is an exception or not. But one of the things that we sort of give away, or it seems like that, that the county gives away without receiving anything back are exceptions. You know, you can get a density bonus. You can get all kinds of bonuses that sort of, if you give something to the county, then the county expects something from you. But some of these exceptions make, can make or break a project. And while I haven't looked at all of the supervisors' meetings, I have looked at a few of them. And the exceptions are just sort of taken, said yes, and they go on. And we may have just made a project, a yes project for somebody, and we didn't get anything back. And so while I know this is probably, um, you know, I'm like a, I'm like a commercial dude. I want something for something. And so if we're giving you the ability to sort of do your project, I think the county should get something for that. And so can you just explain to me what the exception project is? It doesn't look like we get anything.
Sure. Well, so the, the, um, process for applying for and the criteria under which special exceptions are based is spelled out in the ordinance. And obviously there are lots of different types of special exceptions, each one of which has special criteria. Almost all the special, almost all the special exceptions have cri- specific criteria that the board is asked to evaluate. Uh, staff takes the first crack at, at an, analyzing them from a planning perspective. And then the board will decide whether or not it agrees with staff's recommendation. Um, again, the special exceptions are essentially deviations from what the ordinance requires. But if, if the board didn't want to at least have that flexibility, it wouldn't have put them in the ordinance in the first place.
I agree with that. And so what we've done in the housing thing is we've said to a developer, if you want X amount of additional capacity, we will do, A, we'll give you a tax break for a number of years. And the developer says, okay, I'll see if those calculations work for me. And they were, they will either or, or not do it, right? And so it just seems to me, if I come to the board with, and with the criteria that staff has looked at for an exception, at the end of the day, we're basically just looking at whether or not the exception is a, is a, is a viable, is a viable variance from the ordinance. We're not saying, there's no quid pro quo, if I can use that term, between, which I would say there is one, if you look at proffers and you look to whether or not I'm going to get extra density, there is sort of a, there should have been an exchange for that permission to do it. But there doesn't seem to be an exchange for exceptions. And often, as I've looked at some of the things that we've done exceptions for, we make the project, well, we don't. The Board of Supervisors makes the project a goo- a green go, a green light, as opposed to saying, no, we're not going to do your exceptions. And what's the person was like, well, that was nothing. I think I'm going to take this thing and go home then. And so I know that that's a hard thing, but when I start looking for what are the ways that the county can achieve the kinds of goals that it wants, I look at what are the leverage levers that the county has to say to a developer who's come to us and asked for an exception, who's, and we've most of the times say yes. Um, and then they go to them and, um, hopefully they say yes, but then they deal with an exception and just gives basically a project for it, but nothing else. And so Chair, stop at that point.
I'll just throw out a comment, just a thought on that same line. You know, thinking about the exceptions, right, that we saw tonight. Um, the first one was to adjust a single acre from one to the other. So it's really not really, they're not really gaining anything from that. It's just an adjustment to correct essentially an older, I think it was a special use permit. The other is the step back waiver, and the step back waiver really provides the county what, what they want in terms of density, right? We're creating density in that area. So if you, in my mind, were we getting back for that? It would be density. We're actually getting something that we, we want. And then the other one is those perimeter little boundary buffer issues. Without those adjustments, it would cost the applicant more money and kind of be silly, really. So I hear what you're saying in general. I'm just thinking about the three that we saw tonight. I think really it was a win-win.
I agree. The one, where, where I've sort of sat on this is, is Luis's comment about the one up by the food lion at Proffer Road and Airport. We seem to have given that, I don't know if they're ever going to build a thing. Maybe they will never build it. But the thing that you were concerned with was that there was no setbacks. There, there were no step, step backs. We basically said, sure, you can build these blocks. Cause I remember you talking about it was just this big massive sort of townhouses that were up there. And we said yes to the project, but I don't think we got anything for our yes. And so for my colleagues who are, you know, who, who, who are probably more passionate about certain types of design elements than I might be, because I don't, I'm just, I'm learning about some of your comments. It just seems we some developments get, seem to achieve a yes with the county not receiving or the design part of it not being a richer design than we should possibly be having, than I might expect, than I might expect. And so that's just, I started seeing that with the exception piece, that's why. And your, your comments have stuck with me about that. You know, that food lion project that, that's up twenty-nine.
Yeah, I think, I think the council wants to.
So if I could just share basically the most basic criteria for special exceptions. So this is what is required for a special exception under section five, which is the supplementary regulations. And many of the special exceptions come in under section five. And in order to do that, the, the board needs to make a finding that such requirement, that is the requirement of the chapter, would not forward the purposes of this chapter, the zoning ordinance, or otherwise serve the public health, safety or welfare. Or that a modified regulation would satisfy the purposes of the zoning ordinance to at least an equivalent degree as the specified requirement. So basically the board is finding that the zoning regulation doesn't serve its purpose, or that modifying it would serve just as good of a purpose. That's the basic philosophy behind a special exception.
I think there is some benefit to be said for allowing some latitude and flexibility is it's, it's hard to be completely omnipotent when you write a, an ordinance. And so this is one of the major things. I think that flexibility actually enables development to move forward in a way that if otherwise you'd hit that snag and you'd have to stop it. So I think that that flexibility maybe pays dividends in ways that aren't quite as transparent.
Yeah, I, I mean, please accept, I'm not trying to say that the exception process is wrong. All I'm simply saying is that many of the other processes that we go through, whether or not it's zoning or it's, or it's, or it's an SUP, there is, there is a identifiable benefit that comes out of a yes somewhere. Okay, we get something for it. We're going to get more housing. We get, you know, we get some, hopefully you don't get top lots, but we get multi-generational, we get multi, multi-generational lots as we're, as we're trying to push towards them. And that's something that helps the, the life of the community that you can point to. That's, that's where, that's where I'm coming to, trying to be able to have a group of things that we can point to our community and say, this is what happens when something comes before the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors.
Well, I appreciate you remembering and jog my memory a little bit on that conversation. And so it council usually reminds us of, we're not setting precedence, which a lot of people think we are.
We're not, yeah.
And that's because every situation is different. So we could, we could look at the exception and say, well, there's a lot of benefit to this project. Maybe it's not the perfect project. It probably isn't a perfect, perfect project, but there's there's a lot of benefit by building this project, whether we get more density, we get more housing, we get more commercial, whatever it might be. And so, yes, maybe this, there's we'll need to weigh, is there, you know, the, the, the setback issue, the step back, if it was something that we've, and, and, and one of, one of um, my, my issues with it has been, a lot of times they're asking us to evaluate that and, and get rid of it without giving us information to evaluate it. We don't get sections. We don't understand. Sometimes we don't get topo uh, to even understand, well, what is a condition of this, of this property? I mean, unless we got the time to go out there and take a look at that property and, and really evaluate it personally, we, we really wouldn't know. Is it appropriate or not? Um, so, so I think, I think that's been one of my issues with, with some of those exceptions. Um, but yeah, everybody's, everyone's going to be different. And I, I do think that's the reminder that we always get, which is really appropriate. And I don't think the, the public understands that, because a lot of the comments that we get, they think that if we, if we make a recommendation, we are setting precedence, you know? And I don't know how we do a better job communicating that, but it's, I think it's just kind of human nature, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you, Chair. You had a, a new business, right?
Yeah, there's something separate. I know if we were wrapped up on that topic, are we, we good? Mr. Barnes says, yes, we are good. Oh, as we continue just to do our work, I just want to make sure just as a group, we're really trying to stay abreast of what the county's goals and vision is in certain sectors, right? So we've had economic development, you've had housing, Commissioner Bibbin, as you mentioned, the chief operating officer provided some insights on vision and tactics and goal settings. There's other topics out there as well, you know, like the transportation. We used to get a presentation from Mr. McDermott on the smart scale projects that were in queue and what's coming. You know, we have microtransit out there. How is that performing? The jaunt is that, how does that start to interplay with some of the conversations we're having on projects? Um, just want to start keeping that stuff in the forefront. I'm sure there's a whole laundry list and I know time is limited. I'm not saying it needs to be a work session. It could be just a twenty-minute presentation, five-minute Q and A and keep moving, almost like a White House briefing, right? Just, you got twenty minutes on a docket and we keep going. But just want to make sure we continue to stay on the forefront of that, however that starts to look, so formally.
Great reminder. Thanks.
Making a bid to be on the NPL tech. I'm just going to laugh.
Something to keep in mind.
What I'd say, don't, don't be absent on, on the first meeting of the year.
We got that in the minutes, right? Madam clerk, we have that in the minutes.
Don't be absent on the first meeting of the year. That's right.
But great, I think, um, sorry.
Oh, I just, I just had one, one minor item and I brought this up in a fashion, um, to staff or, but when we have these, when we have these mitigation projects where someone has, um, impacted a stream buffer, um, we have one of these projects going on in Cozay right now where, um, there was, um, there was, were exceptions made so that, um, development could encroach upon into the stream buffer. And so there's mitigations that was, was done. It would be nice to know, um, and maybe there is a procedure for this, but to know where that mitigation occurred, first of all, um, so that when later people say, well, what did happen to that mitigation that happened? Where, where did it go? Um, and then the other thing, um, are tree tubes, because those things are menace. And I'd love to know.
What did you say?
Tree tubes. Um, they, they're, they're put around little saplings to protect them when young, but if they're not removed, they've become an enormous source of garbage. And there's a big problem in Cozay right now along the, the trail where there's just no one ever removed the two, tree tubes. They're choking the trees. They're meant to protect. They're not biodegradable. Um, and you know, it's like, you can see some efforts by Cozay, Cozay Trail Crew and other people to try and remove them. But it's just, if you go down there, you know, it's, it's just enormous garbage. So, um, so just those two items, when mitigation occurs, where did it go? How do we track that? Um, someone asked later what happened in the mitigation that occurred and the tree tube thing. I'd love to know the answers to those things.
Great.
That, that was actually something that's come up before, because there's been projects where there was no mitigation. There, there was mitigation presented, but then it didn't materialize. And actually, there's quite a bit of them, examples of that in, in Cozay. Yeah. I just had, I just had one quick, and, and I would love to see some pickleball courts being implemented in, in amenities. So I'll just put that out there. Encourage pickleball courts.
Add that to the tot lots.
Great.
But catch, so Mr. Barnes, you got some items to follow.
What is dog parks?
No, we remember, we want mul- we want mul- we want multi-generational parks.
For different users, not just dogs or not just tots. Right?
All right, I think, um, are you prepared to make a comment on any of this? Lowering your mic.
Think, I, I think I heard a, a series of, of topics this evening that you guys were interested in. With the Christie Schiflet's strategic plan, um, a sort of in-depth discussion of where we stand with housing policy, which that may come to you when we talk about that with that chapter. Uh, update on microtransit, um, I guess, uh, micro, like a update on smart scale, which I think we did provide, but we can give you another one of those. Um, the stream buffer question, um, and, uh, pickleball courts.
I mean, maybe you could handle that sort of pickleball court question by doing something like um, having a, a list or examples of the kind of amenities that we don't have much of in the county. So when a developer's thinking of proffering something, you know, they would have a list of like, what is it the county wants? There's a lot of times developers, I work with developers a lot. They're just like, okay, here's a tot lot. And then you look at the development, it's like, that's not even a development that's likely to have tots. Um, you know, and what about us old people? You know, like, anyway, I'm just saying, we could, it could be a simple fact sheet or just a list or some little pictures, just something to give them some more imagination instead of just always giving us the same tot lot.
I used to pickleball somewhat in jest, but not.
Yeah, it wasn't literally just like.
Not completely, but that is the issue. I mean, a lot of times we'll get something in front of us, always the same thing, the tot lots and the dog parks, and that's an amenity, and that's counted towards my open space. And it's like, I really need it. But pickleball.
Okay, we have gone through our agenda and, uh, I am, uh, prepared to adjourn us until Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty-four, six P M. Notice that, um, there is no meeting on, what is that date that we don't have?
Twenty, twenty-four.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned.